The agenda's been circulated. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Nope.
Hearing none. Motion approved. The agenda is circulated, please. Deputy Mayor Tanner. Councillor Fergier. A bit of drumroll. All those in favor? Agenda's approved. Just a few announcements. I feel like we just met, but it's been a couple of weeks and we've had Canada Day and a new park opening, two new park openings in Bridgewater since then. So going back to June 30th down at Bichenugisca Park, we had the grand opening of that amazing facility. And I would say that it was a beautiful night and the crowds were good. And it was well received by everyone that was there. And I would say Canada Day again, using that park. It was fantastic event. In my opinion, it was the best Canada Day I've ever seen in Bridgewater. So to the committee members, hats off to you. I don't know if you want to speak to Canada Day and...
It was awesome. Lots of people came out. Thank you to the community for your support, for coming out and joining us. It was great to see the park used for all that it's meant to be used. And we hope that it inspired people to continue using it and coming up with new ideas and ways to use it. The Play Me Nova Scotia piano was there. People really seemed to enjoy that and continue to enjoy it. And again, to the sponsors, a huge thank you for stepping up to the plate and making a fantastic day. And the volunteers who put in so many hours. And Sandy Mere Doddman, the Parks Recreation and Culture Director, who works tirelessly to pull that event together. The staff who clean up after and make sure that everything's on site. Everybody who is involved in that event is incredible. And it was reflected in the incredible day. So thank you to everyone.
Anything to add, anybody? The big word I heard used over and over again was the diversity that was part of that event, whether it was the people that came to the community or the vendors or performers. And I thought that was fantastic to hear that. As our landscape is changing in Bridgewater, Nova Scotia, I think it's fantastic. Just last week, my goodness, time flew, we had the grand opening of the South Shore Vet Dog Zone. So Bridgewater's first, I'll say official off-leash park, opened to, again, a great success. We had well over 100 people attend. And I've had a number of comments from people who have been Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And each time, there was about a dozen people or more. There was one comment put on Facebook that the people just wanted to run their dog quickly and they were there two and a half hours because they kept meeting people. And these were new people that they had not met before. So that's really the ultimate goal of this, beyond being outside and running your dog, is the sense of community that it brings. So I would say that that's a huge success. So make sure you go see the South Shore Vet Dog Zone, which is next to the Field House off of Glen Allen. And then councillor Graves, you have something you'd like to talk about with United Way?
Yeah, I do. So the United Way, in partnership with the LCLC Social Reminder Hockey Association, the Bridgewater Mall, Pro Kids Sport Check, and the South Shore Breaker, we're doing a hockey equipment exchange. And what we want you to do is just bring in your old hockey equipment, bring it to the center core of the Bridgewater Mall starting next week. And then on August 21st, we're going to have an exchange where you can come in and take what you need and leave what you don't need. So we think it's a great way for families, particularly those families that play hockey, to make it a little bit more affordable for you. We're also going to have Pro Kids there. And if you're having problems struggling paying some of your fees, Pro Kids will be on hand as well to help out. So if I may, again, it's anytime next week. Drop off your used hockey equipment. It'll be vetted. We'll make sure that it's in good shape when it goes back on the table for those people that need it. And then on August 21st at the LCLC, during the hockey registration, you can take the equipment that you need. So, thank you.
Fantastic. Another announcement is that, well, an announcement we had today from the province of Nova Scotia, for $73,000 for a Grindr Square All Wheels Park, which is, as everyone knows, is a park that has been a long time coming, well over a decade. And two weeks ago, town council passed a motion to move this park forward. And took a little bit of a chance that funding would come in because we are going to backstop any funding shortfall. But this $73,000 takes us a giant step closer. So the next will be going back out to the community and of course going back to our partners at the municipality, District of Lunenburg, recognizing that their users will be on site constantly. So we would hope to enhance that partnership. But that was a great announcement from the province today.
It was.
Anyone else have anything upcoming that they'd like to talk about? Councillor McDonald?
Following up on the skate park and that fantastic announcement is another fundraiser that we're holding to continue to close that gap. It's called Skate of the Art. So we have, I believe it's 50 blank skateboard decks that have gone out to local artists throughout the community and I believe as far away as B.C. They've painted those decks with some pretty incredible designs. And they will be auctioned off on July 28th from 5:00 to 7:00 at the LCLC at 135 North Park Street in Bridgewater. Sorry, I'm seeing here it's 30 decks. I was getting a little bit ambitious there apparently. So it'll be a nice evening. You know, there's no admission. So everything in your pockets should go on skateboard decks and taking home some great art and supporting the project, the park, and our local artists. So please come out and check them out. They're pretty fantastic.
Excellent. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Just another plug for Roof Fest coming up July 21, 22, 23 at the LCLC. It'll feature all kinds of great food, lots of fun, live entertainment. And on Saturday night, you'll get a free pass to wrestling, or in Nova Scotia, we call it rassling. So that's an enhancement to that event on Saturday night, which should bring all kinds of people out.
Will you be wrestling?
We'll see.
Okay, alright. Anyone else have any other announcements? No? Hearing none. We'll move to delegations. And we do have a timed delegation for 6:10, but I think everybody's here. So we can probably, I see Donna's here, so we can call them up. Just a reminder that you have 10 minutes. And then after the scheduled delegation, if there's anyone from the public that wants to speak for up to two minutes, I'll give opportunity for members of the public if they wish to speak. So Donna, if you could just introduce yourself for everybody and let us know why you're here, that'd be great.
Sure. So my name's Donna Montanjas. I'm the Managing Director for Art Happening. I've met some of you, not all of you. And I'm here to talk a little bit about what Art Happening's been doing over the past year since I've been on board, what our future vision is, and how we see ourselves sort of moving forward and supporting the Town of Bridgewater's community plan. And that's pretty much it. And before I start, I'm going to out myself as a CFA. I hope nobody holds it against me. But, so if I seem at times a little bit out of my depth with protocol and/or some local references, I'm fairly new to the area and I'm still sort of catching up on things here. So I wanted to give you, since you don't know much about me, I feel like I'm a bit of a unknown. Oh, this is the outline. I'm going to just talk a little bit about personal background, give an overview of culture, creative industries, and how they can power economic growth, review Art Happening's past year and future vision, and talk about how Art Happening will support TOB, Town of Bridgewater's council community plan. And I'm going to stick pretty close to the slides so I don't go over time and stray. So this is just a little bit about my background. I spent a lot of time in school. I started with a Masters of Arts in Teaching in Art Museum Education. Spent about eight years working at art galleries and museums. Some of those have been the Carcree Gallery of Art in DC, the New Museum of Contemporary Art in New York, and the Blanton Museum of Art in Austin. And from there, having so much access to installations, I got really interested and wanted to go deeper into sort of media studies. Did an MA in that and then continued on for a PhD in Communication and Cultural Studies. And that was done at Concordia University in Montreal, which brought me up here. So I spent six years as an adjunct faculty, what they refer to in the profession as a freeway flyer. So those are part-time faculty who sort of have to drive long distances between gigs to try and cobble together some sort of annual salary. And I've taught at Concordia, the University of New Brunswick in Fredericton, actually commuted from Halifax to Fredericton, Mount St. Vincent University, and Dalhousie. So what has sort of this cumulative life experience and my focus on cultural studies taught me? One of the important things that relates to Art Happening, my work with Art Happening, and hopefully with the town, is that art and economic development can lead to cultural gentrification. I have personally experienced this in several of the places that I've lived. I lived in the East Village in New York for a while and saw artist co-ops and squats sort of moving into areas that were pretty much only frequented by the downtrodden, very sort of poor, dangerous areas. And that turned around over a course of five to 10 years. But the artists were the first ones going into those spaces and renovating them and turning them into really cool places to go and do things that eventually attracted developers and so on and so forth. North Adams, Mass Moke took over an electric, Sprague Electric Company, and has refashioned that once blue collar town into a thriving cultural arts community. In Austin, Texas, the Film and Music Festival, South by Southwest, pretty much changed the face of Austin and has now made it this sort of cultural vortex of everything that's innovative and hip. And then Mile End, I saw the course of time that I was living in Montreal, a company like Ubisoft, a video game developing company, change Mile End into a cultural hub within Montreal. So, but more like sort of closer to home and more relatable examples perhaps, like sort of relative to the size of Bridgewater, would be Wakefield, Quebec, 1,000 inhabitants there, eight art festivals, five galleries, four music venues, two cinemas, and a theater. Smith Falls, 8,000 or close to 9,000 citizens. In 2011, they formed a department of, I'm sorry, an Arts and Culture Task Force that eventually led to Smith Falls District Arts and Culture Council, which is a nonprofit at arms length from the town that helps to sort of develop arts and cultural possibilities there. And I'm going to quickly move on. So I had submitted a report to the council in which covered a lot of this ground. So I'm going to sort of skip by this in the, for time's sake. But there's a lot of research out there about creative workers, creative class, how important these people are to economic growth. And there's a direct connection between economic and cultural capital. So urban consultants and policymakers have been incorporating these ideas into our cultural policy plans over the past couple of decades since this research is being done. These are some statistics on Canadian cultural industries. The cultural sector contributes $40 billion to Canada's GTP. This was as of 2002. And the cultural industries contributed $40 billion, yeah, to GTP, which was more than mining and oil and gas extraction for that year, and agriculture and forestry. And I'd be happy to elaborate on this in question time. But the problem is, still within the arts, there is a tendency towards not valuing artists and arts professionals. These people tend to be asked over and over again to work for free or minimum wage or to donate their art. And so this can lead to job security, or sorry, no job security. And because a lot of these workers are volunteers or temporary staff, there tends to be an inconsistent and high turnover workforce. Art Happening believes in paying cultural workers a fair living wage, which we believe supports the council's community plan priority, stating the desire to create a climate that will increase the spectrum of work opportunities in our community. And besides artists and arts organizers, who else do we serve? The Town of Bridgewater citizens include seniors, youth, parents and guardians, marginalized communities, people with disabilities, low-income residents, and et cetera. Young families and singles are moving to Bridgewater because of the cultural vibrancy. Some specifically as a result of Art Happening and related events. We've been told this, that people have been attracted. They've come to one of our festivals or seen us on King Street and were attracted to the fact that King Street Downtown had an Arts and Culture Centre, community hub. And we hope to work with the town to help think strategically about arts and culture moving forward. So I think I'm going to skip this and save this for questions. Just some of the misconceptions that have come up about, around sort of our programming and how we've sort of shifted to working on a volunteer basis to having a paid staff. This was an unsustainable model for us. And so, but with the Town of Bridgewater support, we are now doing much more and better than two years ago. Our open hours have increased by five times. We're currently open for 25 hours a week. We offer more program. That's increased by sevenfold. And we're serving more community members. It went from 15 to 20 a month to now over 100 a month. The past year, we served over 1,500 visitors. Again, there's been also some clarification, I think, needed around free programming versus donation-based programs. Right now, we do offer free programming. That would include our Open Studio, Open Mic, Art Jam, and some other free services thanks to Town of Bridgewater support. And I think that's, I'm at the end of my time. So I will stop there and leave the rest for questioning or...
Great. Thank you, Donna. Questions from members of council? Councillor McDonald?
So in your short time here, what kind of opportunities have you seen in Bridgewater? We're pretty blank slate, but does anything stand out to you about our local climate that is very promising to you?
Yeah. I mean, and we actually had this conversation when Andrew brought together a bunch of local business owners at CO3. And I mentioned to him then that having seen this cultural gentrification happen in several of the places I've lived, when I came to the South Shore, I got really excited. And I got really excited about Bridgewater because I felt that same kind of energy here that I had felt in those other places right before these things, like the tipping point happened. And so that got me really excited. When I see places like CO3 and the Yoga Studio and now Ferkenstein's and Art Happening and sort of all of these creative, independently owned, really interesting things happening right downtown. And I just feel like there's sort of a critical mass of progressive, creative-thinking people here. And I just, yeah, I just thought this is a good place to land. And a good place to sort of try and, you know, make things happen.
Questions?
Just a comment. I've been to a couple of your open mics and I have to say it's a pretty amazing spot. We can go in there and see young people, middle-aged people, and old people like myself in there. And even older, just contributing their art or their talent. It's a pretty amazing spot. So if anybody here hasn't been to the open mic at Art Happening, I would highly recommend it. It's a nice experience. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor Graves. And that actually points out too, one of the things that we really pride ourselves on is our intergenerational programming. And programming that brings together all ages, all age groups. The Collar Throw Festival was another example of that. And even four-legged animals as well. But yeah, I think I'll just leave it there.
Councillor McDonald?
So you had provided a number of letters of support for us to look through. And I noticed that a number of them, that, you know, they're expressing their support and what they like about Art Happening. But a lot of them say, "We hope that you'll keep it open," which of course is not our decision. We're, you know, it's independent of us. Do you feel that there's a misconception in the public that it's a Town of Bridgewater initiative? Is that something you've ever struggled with?
No, I don't think it's a misconception. But I think our visitors are aware that in this beginning stage of our growth, that we are really dependent on our funding from the town. And the original sort of plan for, or original ask for a three-year period of funding was with the idea to work towards self-reliance. At the same time, I think because we offer a service that would otherwise be provided by a municipality and it also supports some of the services that the town currently offers, that it wouldn't be, how should I put this? That we, you know, it wouldn't be unusual for the town to continue to support an arts and culture organization like Art Happening. And honestly, we know that if we don't, and I'm not putting, I'm just being honest, that we would have to drastically change our services if we were not to get funding from the council. And, you know, I don't know. Like, I don't know how much we could offer without that funding currently. Yeah.
More questions? No? Everyone? Okay.
I do want...
Alright.
I do want to offer anyone who, any of the council members who have not been to Art Happening or one of our programs to please come down in the next month. We would love to have you and show you around and tell you more about our programs and stuff. So, please.
Thank you, Donna. Oh, councillor Graves?
What are your hours then, Donna? What are your hours?
Oh...
Just so people know.
Currently, yeah. They do change seasonally. We currently have a brilliant young man who's working for us and whose video I didn't get a chance to show. But at the next meeting, when he can actually be present, I'll actually ask him to show his video. It was about the Rain Art Project that we did with the Placemaking Committee. But because we have him on board over the summer, we are open Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays, 1:00 to 6:00. Monday, Wednesday, Friday, from 2:30 to 4:30, 5 o'clock. Depending on the day, yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak? Or if I could see, one. Come on down, please, and just introduce yourselves if you don't mind.
I'm Nancy Sherwood. And I'm happy to say I'm one of the paint artists for working with the Bichenugisca Park. And I brought this show and tell because it's one of the things we did is make stencils for the art that was used for the rainy day. If you were at the opening, some of you were, I recognize you. We got a little help from the downpour. And so what was on the stencils that the adults and the student participants of the work made was revealed by the rain. Spray was invisible until there was rain. And there was excitement in the air. People wanted to see their work. I've had phone calls from people saying, "I really like where you placed my stencil." And one of those people was Patty Hurdle, who is First Nations and lives on the river and takes a great deal of care, you know, from her Mi'kmaq perspective. And she was also a fantastic artist, made a lot of stencils. So my job was meeting new people. I really found it fun to find out who were parents and who just dropped in to participate. And learned a lot because I had lived in Lumbur County for 30 years and was away. And I came back and it's so lively here downtown. It's really quite remarkable with that park and with people excited about the art that's going on. And we had really good resource people like Peter Weichl coming in costume during the program. And Ellen Hunt was an elder from Mi'kmaq Nation. And so I had a really, really good experience meeting people and having more connection with the kids through their imagination and hands-on. Where at a time when the hands-on is being lost. And so bringing it back and getting more of the people involved in their imagination and making something, they can see results, that was really amazing. So that's what I wanted to share tonight, is really appreciating the town for the changes that are being made and that I'd like to participate in that.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public? Come on down? Come on down, if you just tell us your name, please?
My name is Sheila Rodenizer.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I just have to bring this up. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to be, have a few moments to speak in regards to the amazing impact I feel Art Happening is having in our community. My family owns several properties in the Town of Bridgewater. And one of the biggest obstacles that I've found over the years in the Town of Bridgewater is that how Bridgewater has, or should I say has not, been able to define itself. I believe that this obstacle is now being removed with the help of organizations such as Art Happening. Art Happening is a nonprofit organization and needs the support of not only the private sector, but also you as well. In my opinion, this organization is helping to redefine Bridgewater as an awesome place to raise a family. With its multitude of art programs and functions held at their venue, there is something for everyone. Their passion for creating a space in which the creativity flows and presenting opportunities for up-and-coming artists to express themselves through their art has shown the potential of Bridgewater as a place to call home. These programs and functions are bringing our community together in a way that is helping to build a wonderful, supportive, open-minded, inclusive town for all walks of life. It has been my privilege as a landlord to this organization. And in doing so, I have been inspired by these extraordinary individuals who are truly making an impact on Bridgewater. I believe that because of these reasons and so much more, as members of the Town of Bridgewater Council, you should not hesitate in lending your financial support. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
She's very, you're very pleasant compared to your father.
I wasn't going, I was going to bring his name up. And then I thought, no.
I have flashbacks.
Other members of the public?
Hello. So some of you know me. I'm Amy Buckland-Nix. And I just wanted to share a little bit about my story as a testimonial to how I came to Bridgewater and how Art Happening drew me here. So back in last fall, November, I was living in Mahone Bay and I just finished a contract at Bluenusco Selection Foundation. By the way, I really enjoyed my time with them and getting to know some of the councillors and through my committee work here in Bridgewater. It was really lovely. So my connection with Bridgewater started there. But I have to say, I was on a decision point. I was in Mahone Bay. I knew I had to move. I had no job. And I knew I loved the South Shore. And I was choosing between Lunenburg, Mahone Bay, Bridgewater, the area around. And in the end, a lot of things overweight itself to live in Bridgewater. And so it was actually... And so it was actually just the idea of wanting to live in a place that has a sense of community, has a really vibrant community, where I saw opportunities as a young person to get a job, but also to connect with people my age. And Art Happening was huge in that, because I knew right from the get-go that there'd be a community of young, you know, creative people I could connect with when I came here. And I already knew Ashton and Brian, and I just knew there was lovely people with this organization. I was really excited about what's happening on King Street, what's happening, you know, there's like Fancy Pants Cafe, Lanah Thai, all these places that are kind of creating a fun, vibrant community to live in. And I just was like, I'm so glad that I moved here. And I'm on the core team of Art Happening right now and just really enjoy working with them. I really enjoyed the Rain Art Project. And it's hard to speak to all the different values of this organization, but I think a big thing is it draws young people here. And it draws people who want to be in a creative community and have a voice and like share a vision of what Bridgewater is to everyone. And I have to say, like, I definitely met some resistance when I wanted to move to Bridgewater. I'd kind of talked to people, it's like, "Oh, Bridgewater's the place you just go shopping." Like, what is there in Bridgewater? But what makes people care about Bridgewater and want to live here is the sense of community. It's having the arts and culture opportunities. I just wanted to share that. And I'm so happy that I've had this opportunity, and I really encourage you to continue to support them.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Button. I've been in front of you before, it's great to be back here in a very different capacity. I'm here today as a business owner on King Street. I own Co3, which is a shared workspace for freelancers, entrepreneurs, and people that work independently, just up from the River Pub and just across the street from Furkinstein, and all kinds of cool stuff that's happening. But I'm here to provide a little bit of evidence of the connection between arts and culture and business and economic development. So my business is dependent on me being able to attract people that can really work anywhere in the world that they choose to work. So they work digitally, so Co3 is now home to programmers, technology startups, digital marketers, branding agencies, poets, authors, you name it. And it exists in Bridgewater, because Art Happening exists in Bridgewater. If you look at any sort of technology startup ecosystem across the globe, there is this direct connection between the technology entrepreneurs that sort of coalesce into an area and the interesting arts and culture scene that's happening in those communities as well. And I was keenly aware of that when I was thinking about where to set up Co3. And the fact that I could promote the idea of coming to work at Co3 for the afternoon, grabbing, you know, lunch at a place like Lanah Thai or Fancy Pants, going to grab a beer after work at the River Pub or Furkinstein, then checking out an open mic, like, the list of value propositions kept growing for me. And that's allowed me to really grow that business from, you know, two or three, three members to over twenty members now. So this is an integral part of our economic development plans, an integral part of my business, of being able to have interesting things that are happening in the neighborhood around this really cool space that I've been able to create in the downtown. There has to be that connection to the outside world. So if the council has interest in attracting more of those kinds of businesses to this community, I really encourage you to see that connection, a link, between being able to do that and being able to support arts and culture in this community. And I would think that any investment that you put into Art Happening to help make that happen, and their ability to leverage that investment is going to be ten times more return on investment than you would be able to do just going out to do a business attraction strategy. So I just thought I'd share that with you tonight. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Andrew.
Cheers.
Everyone else has spoken so well, I wondered why I should come up here. I'm a senior, and that's why I'm here telling you about this. Because for seniors, there's not that much fun going on. But if you go to the open mic, it's intergenerational and it's a lot of fun. And I wrote a letter to, for Ashton to give to you, and I'm just going to quote part of it. As a senior citizen, I've been very pleased to take part in all of these activities that are offered there. And open mic's my favorite part. And you won't only just find musicians there, but storytellers, poets, and maybe a dancer will show up sometime, or a ventriloquist, we don't know. Anyway, for me, the intergenerational part of it is very valuable. And it makes my life in Bridgewater very rich, so I just want to support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public? If you could tell us your name, and then-
Hey, everybody, my name is Maddie Frelick. And I'd just like to thank you all for giving me the time today to speak to you all. I'm seventeen years old and I go to Parkview Education Center in Bridgewater. And I remember the first time I went to Art Happening, I was around fourteen, I'd just finished grade nine, and I saw on Facebook this ad for an open mic. And I was like, I was really nervous, I'd only been playing guitar for like maybe five months or something. And I went and I played and it was terrible, and I remember that. But since then, I've kept going and I've gotten more into music. And I've recently, this year's my second summer performing at the Folk Cover Festival in Lunenburg and doing music around the community. And I accredit a lot to it, a lot of it, to Art Happening, Bridgewater. And besides personal connection to the organization, I've also seen in the community, going to school with a lot of the other kids, that they've, especially open mic nights, or going to other Art Happening events in the community in times where they might be out in the town doing bad decisions or not maybe doing the best thing, they're at the space and listening to music or laughing at comedy. And that's why I think Art Happening is such a great place, because it's opening the doors for youth to really get into art and just to connect them with it and sort of something that wouldn't be there without Art Happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on to the microphone, John.
Yeah, I, I met, my name is John Pritchard. I met Donna about this time last year. And without her leadership, there would be no Art Happening. She is the heart and soul of this organization. And it wasn't until this evening that I realized the extent of her qualifications. You could not get any, anybody more qualified to run this. And the friendship, the feelings in the, the people that I've met at Art Happening are something which will bind this community together and in a way that anything else that this community has to offer cannot do. You lost part of your high school here, don't lose Art Happening.
Thank you, John. Any other members of the public wish to speak?
My involvement with Art Happening was something that was extremely important to me. And at a time when both my husband and I were ill, I was dealing with cancer. And I just really feel like the programs that they offered at Art Happening was a real lifesaver for me. And because it didn't cost an arm and a leg at all, I was able to, you know, work through the process that most people, you know, have to work through when they're going through cancer and treatment and everything. And so I just see it as something that really offers economic saving in our community as well. I didn't have to go to, you know, government-funded programs, you know, counseling and stuff like that. The things that they had at Art Happening really helped me to work through those very difficult, that very difficult walk that I had to do. In their writing, classes that they offered for free, in their artistic expression classes, all these things really helped me a lot. And I just wanted to be here to say, thank you, Art Happening, for being there and helping me through difficult times.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, let me on behalf of council thank everyone for coming, and for those who spoke especially. I know it's not always easy to stand at a podium in front of a television camera and, and, I mean, we generally are friendly around the table, so we try not to make it too difficult. But we appreciate your input on this topic. It's not on our agenda to discuss the funding tonight, but the information that you've provided is absolutely, is extremely valuable to council as we go forward with this. So I just wanted to thank you for coming. Thank you, Dawn, for your presentation as well. Does anyone have any questions, any members of council, of anyone who spoke, just before we go? Okay, thank you. Our next item is Plan A, application for development agreement for Richard Knickel, Laheve Auto, 141 Laheve Street. And... We're going to get a presentation, good?
We are.
Thank you, Mayor McChus.
Thank you.
So I'll just walk you through the development agreement that we have created for this property. So we came to council a few months ago with a preliminary report. Since that time, we've had a public participation meeting, and then some were crafting a development agreement. The property in question is here, 141 Laheve Street. So it's adjacent to Mariners Landing, the port of Bridgewater, and close to, so the Bridgewater Mall is down this way, and this is Glen Allen Drive here, just to give you an idea of the context. So it's currently used for auto repair services, that's a non-conforming use. Non-conforming uses can continue, but there are limits on expansion in both the municipal government act and in our municipal planning strategy. And what they would like to do is to build an addition that is larger than what will be permitted. So this is the property that we're talking about here. There's an older part to the building, and then this is a newer part, there's another view here, this is the older part and the newer part. They're proposing an addition on this end here, two additional service bays, this is Laheve Street. The property is currently zoned industrial, and it's included in the Laheve River Development Agreement area. So there are additional criteria that the municipal planning strategy requires, and we're considering a development agreement in the Laheve River Development Agreement area. Like I said, automobile repair services are not a permitted use in the industrial zone. But we have some good language in our municipal planning strategy that allows us to consider additional uses by development agreements. So that's how we can go forward with this process. So currently, services are provided in a twelve-hundred-square-foot facility. They're proposing a thirty-five-by-thirty-foot addition to the existing structure. So this is the older portion here, and then this is the newer part, the older portion is over here. They're proposing an addition here on this end. It would be two additional service bays, and it would look very similar to what's here now. And the entrance would be sort of on the end, vehicles wouldn't go in the front, they'd go in the end of the building. So this is a site plan that they prepared, this is the new proposed use. There's a little bit of a mistake, it is going to be the same distance from the road as the existing structure here, it's not going to be set back like it is in the drawing. So when we're doing a development agreement, sometimes it's helpful to look at how the land use bylaw treats similar developments in other zones. So the land, when we're doing a development agreement, we can override the land use bylaw to some degree, so these standards aren't binding. But it can be helpful to have a look and see how council thought we should deal with these kinds of developments in other areas. So because automobile repair services are permitted use in the general commercial zone, we had a look at the zone standards, and these are the setbacks that are required for that zone. Ten feet from the front property line, sixteen feet from the rear property line, and thirteen feet on either side, from either side property line. There can be a maximum two points of access, there are currently three for this property. And there are design standards that apply for new parking lots in the land use bylaw as well. Because this is an existing use, and there were a number of ways that we could approach this request. The first one would have been to try to rezone the property, or we could have tried to remove the Laheve River Development Agreement overlay. But we thought that a development agreement would allow us the most flexibility in how they want to proceed with their development. But what we've tried to do is give them the same kinds of permissions through the development agreement as they would have if they were doing the development as of right in a zone that permitted this use. So if you have a look at the development agreement, you'll see that there's no site plan. But what we've done is defined a building envelope. So what they could do going forward is they can expand or develop within that building envelope without having to come back to council to amend the development agreement. Some of the issues that they're facing right now is because of those three points of access and because those accesses are very wide, there's a lot of interaction between pedestrians walking along the sidewalk on Laheve Street and bicycles and cars on Laheve Street and cars coming and going from that property. So we're trying to add some more definition to that sidewalk and also decrease the width of those access points and just try and control that traffic movement a little bit. So the development agreement does require closing off one of those access points, and they can do that a number of different ways. The development agreement calls for a landscaped strip or island, but it's understood in the development agreement, actually, that that could be a movable planter box, it doesn't have to be, you know, a cement barrier, it could be something that's quite, quite easy to prepare. So just to give you an idea of some of the challenges here, this is the public sidewalk, and you can see there's a car parked on the public sidewalk here as well, there's a car on the public sidewalk. And when I was standing taking these pictures, there were cars moving around in the parking lot, and it felt very much like I was in the way, even though I was on the public sidewalk. It, you feel very exposed when you're crossing through that area. So there's one access here, there's another one here, and then from the other direction, it's a little bit dark, there's another narrower access point here. So we're going to leave it up to the property owner which one of those they can do without, but they're going to have to eliminate one and reduce the width of the other ones. So with respect to parking, again, they're parking on the public sidewalk, so that's another reason why we're asking for the landscaped strips or islands to create that definition, so people don't kind of push out onto the public sidewalks, claim that space for pedestrians. The applicant does anticipate that they will require less parking once they have the service bays operational, because they'll have higher turnover of the cars. So the Laheve River Development Agreement overlay area is kind of interesting, because this is probably the only property that is included in that zone that is not, it's not a flood risk, it's not, it doesn't abut the river, and it is not considered part of the downtown under the Downtown Waterfront Master Plan. So when we're kind of approaching this problem, we thought, well, was it really intentional that they were included on that, in that zone? And we're not really sure that, sure that they were intentionally included, but we didn't take it off. But because of the way the development agreement is structured, there was only one of the criteria under the MPS that really applied to this property. All the rest dealt with flood risk and, you know, aesthetic things, dealing with properties in the downtown and how the buildings were oriented. And this was an existing structure, so we're not going to ask them to turn the building around or anything like that. So really, the only thing that remained relevant was a landscaping plan. So in the development agreement, we've allowed the development officer the option of requiring a landscaping plan before development permit issuance, sort of later on in the process. So because we're doing this development envelope approach, it essentially removes the development from the Laheve River Development Agreement overlay zone, but it's still part of it, but functionally, it's not really going to apply to this property anymore going forward. So this is just to show you, this is the subject property here, and this is the environmental constraints map in the municipal planning strategy. The orange and the reds areas are those areas that are most prone to flooding. You can see that it's not predicted that this property is going to be prone to flooding at all in the future. This property is currently used for automotive repair, but has been used as a service station in the past. The town engineer didn't have any concerns with the use going forward, but he did have some concerns that maybe there could be some legacy contamination from the previous use. So we asked for some environmental reports from the applicant, and they had environmental reports that they had previously prepared. They didn't prepare any new ones for this process, but there were some that they had prepared when they purchased the property to understand the contamination that was present on the site at that time. And all the levels were within the appropriate range. So there wasn't any concern from the town engineer about past contamination, and he didn't really feel like there was any risk going forward. So we haven't asked for any environmental reports from the applicant relating to this process. But I would flag for council that you do have the right to ask for that going forward if you feel you'd be more comfortable with this use, because it is probably a moderate-risk use for contamination going forward. But that's not the recommendation of staff, staff are comfortable with the reports that they've already reviewed. So because this site is in a residential area and close to the Laheve River, we want it to look nice. This is looking down towards Glen Allen Drive, this is Laheve Street here. So you can see there's some existing vegetation separating the subject property from the port of Bridgewater lands and from Mariners Landing. And the development agreement requires them to maintain that landscaping and that vegetation as much as possible. And the development officer, like I said, may require a comprehensive landscaping plan- And the development officer, like I said, may require a comprehensive landscaping plan going forward because they're only asking for one development now, but we have this possibility that, you know, intentionally that they can have future developments without having to come back to council for more amendment to the development agreement. There could be other developments that they're looking at in the future. They'll still need a building permit and a development permit. So at that point, the development officer can ask for a comprehensive landscaping plan if he feels it's necessary. So this is the property here and this is all vegetation here. And we're asking that they maintain that. There's no vegetation here separating these two properties. This is a, an industrial zone property as well. So we're currently not asking for any vegetative buffer between those two properties. Storm drainage and sanitary sewer maintenance is always a concern. Anytime we have a development permitted by development agreement, the standard is that the applicant needs to show that post-development flow of storm water is going to be less than or equal to pre-development flows. So kind of a similar mechanism here. The town engineer can require a storm water management plan during the permitting process if he feels it's necessary. But we haven't required one to date because there isn't really any big concern over the small scale of the development proposing right now. The development agreement does include a special section relating to the public sewer bylaw requiring separation of storm drainage from sanitary sewer and the installation of oil and grease interceptors. And it's always going to be subject to inspection by town staff. That's all included in the public sewer bylaw and it would apply anyway. But because of the maybe higher risk nature of proposed use, we thought it was prudent to put it in the development agreement because that gives us a little bit more, a few more options when it comes to enforcement. If there is a problem, we can approach it through the public sewer bylaw or we can approach it through the development agreement, kind of depending on the situation. So just a refresher on where we are in the process. So we've had a preliminary report to council and a public participation meeting. We're talking now about planning analysis and you have before you a draft development agreement. So hopefully you'll provide, we're asking you to provide first consideration of the development agreement this evening and to schedule a public hearing that would take place on August 14th. So yep, staff recommend that council schedule a public hearing and final consideration of the proposed development agreement for the regular council meeting on Monday, August 14th at 6:00 PM. In council chambers of town hall and direct staff to undertake their required advertising. So if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Questions from members of council? Councilor McGinnis?
Yes. Environmental.
Yep.
The existing property is a service station or repair, service repair shop. Is there any constraint, there might be an environmental concern with the existing footprint?
No. So it, it's really more the historical use that was more of a concern than the current use and the, and the proposed development. So its past use as a service station was a higher risk than the automotive repair services. So when the current owners took over the property, they had serious environmental reports done to do their due diligence before they purchased the property. And the town engineer has reviewed those and is satisfied that they don't show any contamination. And the risk going forward is less and he's not, he's not concerned that we need any additional requirements other than the things that are already in place under the building code.
David Mary Tanner.
Jamie Ellen, you mentioned that they couldn't disturb or remove any of the vegetation in that piece. But at the same time, they're in essence doubling their footprint. So I don't see how that's possible given site access. Does that make sense?
So this, this area here, actually I wonder if we could, it's, it's,
It's a park.
There isn't vegetation on the place where they wanted to build their, does that show the edge of the pavement? So there's the edge of the gravel pavement, the edge of the paved surface here and then proposed gravel surface here. Is that what it says? In any case, they may have to disturb some of the vegetation here, but it won't be this part of the vegetation where it buffers from the street and down onto the Port of Bridgewater land. They're going to maintain that. So the development agreement requires them to maintain it where possible. So there probably will be some disturbance, but we're encouraging them to keep as much as they can.
Yep. And I'm not clear on what you were talking about with regard to environmental assessment.
Okay.
Can you go through that again?
So under the IM6, the criteria for development agreement, town council has, well, staff got triggered as well, has the ability to ask for additional environmental reports if they're concerned about the risk of contamination. Staff have reviewed environmental reports relating to the past use and are satisfied that there's, the risk of contamination is low enough that they haven't asked for any more environmental reports. But council still has the option of asking for those reports if you're not comfortable that that's the case.
Okay, I see.
Any other questions, Councilor McDonald?
The parking requirements, you kind of touched on that quickly, but the parking requirements for, for a business like this, obviously they have cars that are going to be there long term.
Yep.
And then some coming and going, be temporary parking. What are the requirements for parking?
So the only requirements in the land use bylaw are minimum parking requirements. And I can't off the top of my head remember how many spaces they had to provide, but it was, it was only a few. I'm thinking maybe half a dozen spaces. They had way more than they needed. So we did consider applying a maximum number of parking spaces on the site, but because we're requiring them to conform to the design guidelines and we're requiring them to have a permanent hard surface, just the nature of the site and the layout of where everything is, it seemed like that was going to provide enough limitation to parking. We didn't need to have a specific number in the development agreement. Kind of the conditions would control that for us. So we've kind of left the number of parking spaces up in the air. They have more than are required by the land use bylaw, but we haven't applied a maximum.
Sorry, Councilor.
Yeah, when I read my homework, they've done two assessments. One was in 1993 and the other one was in 2002. And actually the tanks were taken out between 1991 and 1992. So they, they've done a couple of assessments on to it and those assessments were okay, environmental assessments, so. Since that time, it's just been a repair shop. It hasn't been gas involved near into the ground, so. Just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you, David Mary Tanner.
I guess to follow on that though, we do have other repair shops in town that when you walk by them, it's a glaze of petroleum, literally. And I guess, how do we prevent that with this particular situation? Or I guess it's not preventable because you always have cars there that might leak petroleum on the surface. But how do you hide that or get it away from the sidewalk? I mean, there's certainly a stretch of sidewalk in town that you walk on in a wet day and it's slippery because of all the runoff in essence.
That's a great question.
With a stronger vegetation.
More vegetation, yeah. Could that be a function of the grading on that site that it's not?
Yeah, but if you tip this the other way, then you've got another issue, right? So I'm just trying to make it look prettier.
Yeah, so I, to my mind, that's a fine balance because we don't want to be harsher on this property or than we would be on others. We want to be fair to everyone. So that's why we're, we're kind of encouraging them to keep the vegetation, but we can't really, I mean, it's industrial property and it's owned industrial, so we have to be kind of reasonable. But Graham, do you have anything to say about that? So we're talking about oil and grease interceptors. And I'm putting Graham in the hot seat because that's his ask, so maybe you can speak to that.
Because of the use, there's requirements in the garage to have oil and grease interceptors, which would contain anything that was done in the building.
Right.
Now, once you move the vehicle out of the building, if you're undercoating or whatever you may be doing, that doesn't stop it from, you know, dripping in the, in the property or even the car tire tracks back and forth.
Right. And I, you know, I understand we have to treat everybody fairly, but at the same time, maybe if we had to do, do over in the past, we might have done things differently than we do today, I guess, or did back then. So.
Well, that's fair.
Yeah, I guess, could we put a more rigid landscaping plan in place? Or, you know, I know you've asked for it or may, may request it prior to, but.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So I guess.
You're the experts.
Yeah, well, so you're thinking specifically of grading and making sure that.
I think to Councilor, to David Mary Tanner's point, are we doing anything differently now than what was allowed? I mean, we don't want to out of business, but I think we all know where we're talking about, where there is, you're right, there's a sheen, there's a smell. You know that, you know what that business is. Is this different than what would have been approved back in the day? So that we don't have a repeat of that situation?
I'm not sure that we are doing anything different. I would say maybe there have been improvements in the building code. Would you agree with that, Graham?
If it's the property that I think you're talking about, I think it's a different process or some different work that they do at that particular shop, then perhaps they do it this one that we're talking about here. I don't know if you can prevent it at all. I mean, if, if you're talking about having a grass strip between the parking lot and the sidewalk to maybe contain anything that could run off, I mean, perhaps that would do the trick. It's always tough keeping a grass strip or a vegetation strip between two paved surfaces. It doesn't last very long. It burns off and it's hard to maintain.
But even if it was gravel, it might, yeah.
Councilor Thurburn.
Yeah, my, my only comment, I think we're talking about the same one that I'm thinking about. This service station is not doing undercoating, it's doing repair work and there's been none of that there before. So why would it start with an addition to its home?
Maybe the whole reason for expanding this business is to take on new opportunities like that. I, who knows?
But that hasn't been suggested. I don't, I guess there's nothing to prevent it, but yeah. This property is further from the street too then.
That's true. Councilor McDonald.
Kind of building on that, when will the policies be reviewed that will give us the opportunity to look? We've, we've had a number of contaminated sites in the town. And they sit for a long time because of the, the commitment and the, the financial obligation to, to remediating those properties. What can we do better? What can we do differently? How do we, you know, is that something that maybe we're interested in pursuing? So that we don't end up with more and more properties? And as development agreements come up, maybe there's, there's something that we can be doing to protect some of those properties? Is that a reasonable?
Well, certainly if there are design features that we could control to reduce the risk, then that's something that we could do by, through the, through a development agreement. We're talking about cleaning up contaminated sites. I think that's more of a provincial responsibility. But there are, I'm sure, things that we could be doing in our land use bylaw to help.
Be proactive.
And also on a site by site basis, when we have an opportunity for a development agreement. I mean, if, if we have concerns, now would be the time to, to do something about it because, you know, they've come to you for approval of this development. So if, if there's things you'd like to ask for, now would be the time to do it for sure.
For me personally, I could imagine, you know, a low hedge row as an example that would be easily maintained, that would prevent sort of that look of,
An industrial site, yeah.
So, but the development officer has, does have the ability to.
He does, yeah.
Deal with landscaping. So it's already built into this agreement, correct?
It, it is to some degree. So that would be leaving it up to the development officer's discretion. So if council wants more control over what that might look like, then it should probably be built into the development agreement somehow.
Okay, Councilor Thurburn.
Having been down to that site for a while, I used to get my work done there at one time. But it's, it's quite a long sidewalk that goes down past his office. And I wonder, is a curb raised there that would make a difference? And protect the people on the street and give the car equal access to the property? And kind of do two things. That would control most of what you're trying to control with a raised edge.
And that's already baked into this, this agreement, is it?
So are you thinking on this edge, you mean?
Yeah. The existing edge, just raising that a little bit. So the cars will park in the garage area and the, and the walkway will be free of cars parking there because there'll be a little abutment that'll stop them.
So what we've asked for is a landscape or island or strip. So it could look like that, but we have permission in the development agreement that they could accomplish that with planter boxes.
Sure.
So would that meet your?
It would separate the two and give the, the people walking a clear path to follow. And the same thing with the people driving cars.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's important too because in, in half of your photos, there's a vehicle parked on the sidewalk.
Yeah, that's why I brought that up.
And there are different ones.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh yeah, this is all taken on different, even the, if we go back to the aerial photo, there's a car parked on the park and on sidewalk.
Yeah, so I think that separation is, it might solve both, both issues.
Yeah.
Any other questions before we put a motion on the floor? Hearing none, someone prepared to make a motion?
I would move that town council for the town of Bridgewater, direct staff to schedule a public hearing and second reading of the development agreement regarding 141 La Havre Street during the regular council meeting on Monday, August 14th, 2017 at 6:00 PM in the council chambers of the town hall.
Can I have a second, your please? Councilor Graves, any further discussion?
Okay, it's a question?
You can.
So if we give first consideration and schedule a public hearing now, I'm not going to make any changes to the development agreement. So if you want me to make changes and come back with more landscaping and if you would like a permanent curb, then we shouldn't give first consideration today. We should wait until August to do that.
It's a month delay.
Yeah, it's a month delay.
You've already got built in the, the temporary separation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right? So I would assume that temporary doesn't mean put it in for 15 minutes while we approve things and then pull it out.
No, no, the idea is that, you know, to give them something that is not cost prohibitive, an option that would accomplish the definition that we're looking for, but wouldn't cost a fortune. So that's the idea behind the temporary planter boxes. And that, that was a request from the applicant. That's what they came up with, that they would like to do, so.
And you understand what we're, what we're looking for, so.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
You can express that clearly to the applicant.
Yeah, yeah.
Is everyone happy with that?
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
Question?
Question being called. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Our next planning item is preliminary report proposed municipal planning strategy land use bylaw map amendments. Rezoning from downtown residential RF to neighborhood commercial C758 New York Street. Jamie Ellen, you have another presentation?
So this one is in a phase of our own process, so this will be a shorter presentation. So we're talking about 58 New York Street, which is, this is the, the building here, which is, has historically been used as a doctor's office. It hasn't been since 2015?
June 2016.
2016. So this is the applicant, Dr. Barris. He's present as well. So it's been baking for a few months and Dr. Barris has been trying to sell it. The existing structure, it's been used as a family doctor's office since 1980. It was, that use was permitted by a development agreement that was pretty restrictive in what it defined as a medical practitioner. It could be a doctor, a dentist, a chiropractor, an osteopath or an oculist. Dr. Barris hasn't had any interest from another medical practitioner wanting to purchase this property and use it as a doctor's office. And the emergence of the collaborative care model of medical practice requires different facilities. So he's not confident that they'll, he'll find another medical practitioner who would like to move into this building. And to use it as a single unit dwelling would be difficult with, that will be impossible without extensive renovations. This is the site here. This is the 58 York Street. This, this is York Street, Queen Street, Pleasant Street. This is our downtown here in our north parquet, just to give you an idea of where this site is located. It's part of a low and medium density residential area, but there is some commercial use and some institutional use in the area as well. So you could really characterize it as, as residential focused, but with some mixed use. The zoning is currently downtown residential. So the permitted uses are one and two unit dwellings as of right. And you can have some smaller scale commercial office and institutional development by development agreement only. So no site plan approvals. There is a potential purchaser for the property who would like to have a personal service shop on the, on the site. That would only be permitted under this current zoning as a home-based business. So it would be smaller scale and someone would have to actually be living in the property as well. The requested zoning is for neighborhood commercial, which would permit a lot of the same uses. Again, small scale commercial and office uses. The smaller uses are permitted by site plan approval. If they want to have a larger use, they're required to go through a development agreement. But while it's, it's very similar in the kinds of uses that they, that they permit, they could have a personal service shop as the sole use in the building under this new zoning. And it's just by site plan approval or by development agreement, kind of depending on the scale. So this is the very first consideration that we had of this applicant, application. We'd like to schedule a public participation meeting for Wednesday, July 26th at 6:00 PM to hear what people in the community have to say about it. And then we'll come back to council with the planning analysis report. So just a little bit of a change of, of approach here. We're not asking council to set the date for the PPM. We're kind of running into some issues with coming back to council to set the public participation meeting, not in this file, but in relation to other applications. It's, it's a kind of a red tape hurdle that we've got to keep going through. It's not actually required by our municipal planning strategy. So going forward, we'd like staff to set the public particip, public participation meeting in cooperation with the applicant and just advise council of when it will be and invite counselors to attend. So going forward, we'd like staff to set the public particip, public participation meeting in cooperation with the applicant and just advise council of when it will be and invite counselors to attend. Publicize it at the council meeting. So what we're asking for now is just for council to approve, staff to put their time into this application and to schedule a public participation meeting on, at the end of July.
Great, thank you. Any questions before we put a motion on the floor? Someone want to make a motion?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater refer the application proposed municipal planning strategy and land use by law map amendments. Rezoning from downtown residential RF to neighborhood commercial C seven to staff to schedule a participation meeting and complete planning analysis.
Have a second, your please. Council Frasier, each two of council begins, sorry. Any further debate? Hearing none. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. No correspondence for information, correspondence for action. Second story is Loom Center's request for funding for their Girl Talk. And I'm assuming that it's here and it did not go to our grants to organizations committee, which is our normal process. So what is council's wish?
It's, it's also, I think, the second year for this. If I remember who did this last year.
Yes.
At least the third year.
Ah, third.
Is it the wording of the letter a sponsor versus, is that why it didn't come to?
By understanding, they know about the grants organization's process and decided to bring it to council.
Directly.
And the event this year will be held at Hebbville Academy. Council's wish, if there is a wish, or do you?
I just want to say that it's, looks to be a worthwhile event and I support, you know, it's ages nine, twelve. And it seems like they get a good turnout and I'm in support of the event and the program that's being offered.
For me, my struggle is I don't have an issue with the event. I have an issue with finally getting a grants organization policy. And then having groups who know about the grants organization policy try to circumvent the grants organization policy. So we, and with it not being the first time this has happened, I, I get a little frustrated with that. Council Graves.
That particular organization had a, an executive director leave on short notice because of family problems. And they have a new financial person. So that's probably what happened.
Okay, so perhaps if we approve this, we should, we should probably also respond then with a letter just advising them that going forward, we do have a process that should be, that should be followed.
Good idea.
Okay, what is council's wish? Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Worship. The town council for the town of Bridgewater approved funding for the Girl Talk program in the amount of five hundred dollars charged to the sponsorship account.
Have a second, your. Council Thorburn, any further discussion?
Could we ask for, is there other funding that goes into this program? Can we ask for that detail in the document going back to them?
We can.
Just out of curiosity, just, do other municipalities help fund it as well?
I think the, the letter states that they were asking, they were asking other municipal partners.
We were inviting you along with other towns and municipalities to assist with providing healthy snacks and supplies. And this, yeah, that's our contributions.
Yeah.
For healthy snacks and supplies. Council McDonald.
I'm really putting you on the spot here, Sandra. Do you recall, for some reason, I believe that we approved last year with a letter outlining our grants to organizations policy. Are we doing that same thing again?
I did check into that. It was approved without any conditions.
Okay.
There was communication between our staff and their staff advising on the proper channels.
Right.
But there was nothing from council.
Okay.
Prior to that.
Okay, thank you.
And do you still want to, any financial information?
I just, yeah, I mean, with any organization I think we sponsor, give money to, we should have a little bit of background on what, what the cost of the program is overall, who else is giving money. Just a general overview. And I think to Councilor McDonald's point, a document that includes our process for granting this kind of money and approval process. How we work that into the motion, but.
I agree because sitting on the committee grants to organizations committee, there's a, there's a process that we go through in, in scoring the applications. So I, I agree with Deputy Mayor Tanner's comments about asking.
So we don't have to change the motion, but we'll just, we'll just include that with documentation. Council Thorburn.
Yeah, my point is that following the process, they would have presented a financial statement to that committee and we would be wasting our time here tonight. Trying to get them to do just what we want them to do to get the funds that they want to operate. So I think we have to communicate with them. I will support the motion, but we need a financial statement.
We will make those, those requests and make sure that they're clear next year, that there'll be a process. Thank you. Okay, any further questions?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Ah, Nova Scotia Lifeguard Services Life Saving Society requests proclamation. Does someone want to make that proclamation tonight? I can just, I don't, don't everyone fight over this?
I usually get the big ones, so.
Thank you, Council Thorburn.
Jump in there, Council Thorburn.
Here it goes. Whereas the mission of Life Saving Society Canada is to prevent drowning throughout this great country. And even one drowning in the town of Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is one too many. And whereas most drownings are preventable in the water smart community and only through water smart education and a healthy respect for the potential danger that any body of water may present can. We truly enjoy the beauty and recreation opportunities offered by these bodies of water. And whereas the Life Saving Society urges Canadians and residents of the town of Bridgewater to supervise children who are in and around the water to refrain from drinking alcoholic beverages while participating in aquatic activities. And to wear personal flotation devices or life jackets at all times when boating. Whereas the Life Saving Society Canada has declared July the sixteenth to the twenty second, two thousand seventeen as National Drowning Prevention Week. To focus on the drowning problem and hundreds of lives that could be saved this year. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor, Mayor David Mitchell do hereby proclaim July the sixteenth to the twenty second, two thousand seventeen as National Drowning Prevention Week in the town of Bridgewater and do commend its recognition while citizens of our town of Bridgewater.
Secondary. Council McDonald, excited, I'm growing here now, it's awesome.
Ah, terrible.
Any questions?
Question.
Hearing none, questions being called, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Made from a home bay request for waiver of charges under the Glen Allen Cost Recovery Bylaw. So this is part of the affordable housing development proposed for what is affectionately known as the Kirk Forestry property. And would our director of finance wish to kind of talk us through this before we put a motion on the floor?
Well, there has been a request.
Can you just pull the microphone a little closer, please?
There has been a request, but staff to, to have the Glen Allen charges waived on that property. But staff would like the opportunity to review the implications of that.
Do you anticipate, do you know how long that will take to get that back to council?
Well, I think the intention is for the next council meeting, which is August fourteenth.
Fourteenth, yeah.
Yeah.
Are there any questions before we put a motion on the floor?
Out of curiosity, what's the ballpark value?
Ah, four hundred and fifty thousand. And, and there's, there are more things to investigate than just the financial implications. There's also the, the kind of, how do we do, how would we do it through the M G A and so on? What's the mechanism?
Okay, thank you. Council McDonald, is there a question?
Not necessarily a question to be answered tonight, but just to put on, on staff's radar. If this was something that we can move forward with and, and the implications aren't too great for, for council to, to approve it. Does the, the process offer us any guarantees that it will in fact be affordable housing and that that can be enforced should, you know, non-affordable housing, other, other housing is, is built in its place? Just to ensure that if, if we do this for the purpose of supporting affordable housing in Bridgewater, that that's what we get in the end.
So that was similar to the question I was going to have is, is the benefit should be that affordable housing is constructed since we know there's a need for it. Any other questions? Someone want to put a motion on the floor, please?
I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater refer the letter from made from home bay document seventeen dash zero nine two A. Requesting a waiver of charges under chapter one eight nine by law respecting cost recovery. Glen Allen extension to staff for analysis report and subsequent recommendation to council.
Thank you. Have a second, your please. Council McDonald. Any further debate? Ready for the question? Question being called. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Reports and recommendations. Recommendation for Lunenburg County Multipurpose Corporation Board Marketing Coordinator, which is an unbudgeted expenditure, but not an unexpected one, as we had way back at budget time to have the discussion with, with the board chair about the future of a, a marketing position. So this is what that is. It is unbudgeted. But does someone want to put a motion on the floor and then maybe we can discuss it?
I would move the town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the request of the Lunenburg County Multipurpose Center Corporation and approve an unbudgeted expenditure of twenty five thousand dollars for the town's portion of hiring a marketing coordinator for the L C L C.
Have a second, your please. Council Frasier. Discussion, questions?
Yeah, M O D L dealt with this issue yet? Do you know?
I don't believe they've dealt with it yet.
Okay.
They always meet after us.
Well, they're always after. Last time it didn't fare up so well, we went first.
This should not be a shock to them. And my understanding is they also asked for this. So.
Might be their idea.
I, I would be very surprised if they don't approve it because they did request it, so.
Is this a full-time position, long-term, or is it a term position to see how it works out?
It's full-time, yeah. But it, there would be, you know, they'd have to meet their performance. If they didn't, like any other employee, they would be, I would hope. That would be addressed. Council Thorburn.
Father to that question, when is L C L C year end? Because this is probably only partial payment for part of a year.
It's March thirty first.
Yeah, it matches ours.
March thirty first, but next year it would be more than twenty five then. I would assume because you're only paying for six months.
This is a full year salary, twenty, fifty thousand.
It is for a full year salary? So we're only supplying it for six months and wouldn't that be in half?
I don't know how that works. It's a good point.
Six points have already passed.
Yeah, so.
So. If it's for a full year's salary, then it should only be twenty five thousand, not fifty.
It is asking for a change the operating budget to add an extra fifty thousand dollars on an annual basis for us to be twenty five of that. So I don't think it's saying that this person's going to get fifty thousand now. It's just we're adding that
Overall.
Overall. So if it's six months, then our portion should be half again. There you go. But I will. Because it wouldn't be, it's not a hundred thousand dollar job.
And I'm hoping that Deputy Mayor can help me out here.
Good luck.
Well, no, I, I, we're hiring a full-time marketing manager and I, it's my understanding that the arena is almost one hundred percent booked. It's hard to get a late time there. The other rooms are booked on a regular basis, probably not to capacity. But the main growth, I guess they're looking for is the pool.
Pool and events, I would suggest.
Yeah, and I, I think there's a misconception about how booked the arena is. It's booked almost a hundred percent during prime time hours. But there's a lot of other hours during the middle of the day that aren't being booked. And I think that would also be part of their target as well.
Yeah, okay. My just concern, I just want to make sure we really need one. Not, I don't trust the executive of the Life Design Center.
I, I, I will be supporting the motion because I do believe that we need one. I believe the facility's been open long enough that we need a little bit more of a boost in promoting the facility and drawing events. I think right now, we're asking a lot of the general manager of that facility, who has to run the facility, oversee the, the mechanics of it. As well as booking a nice time, booking pool programs and somehow finding us concerts and other events. I think it's, I think it's too much for one person. I hope. The goal is that this position will pay for itself a few times over eventually. So.
Another really important point is the, that if there's someone selling the facility and selling the events and selling it as a destination, they're in essence selling the town of Bridgewater to and the other services that are available. So it's, it's, you know, kind of a double win for us in some respects.
Council Frasier.
Do they have an anticipated start date for this marketing employee?
I think we would, to begin the hiring process, once this is approved.
Okay.
There's a job description drafted and everything already is.
Okay, ready to go.
Any further questions being called? All those in favor? One percent is carried. If, maybe someone could let us know once M O D L has approved that, just so we know that that's, that's go ahead. That would be helpful, I think. Recommendation of the inspection facilities manager. Is that your title? Demolition. It is catchy. Wow, all right.
I didn't make it up.
Demolition order eight, sorry, six eighty six. Let's not get the address wrong now. Six eighty six King Street.
It's important to get the right address.
We all know which building.
Yeah, so I don't want to get into too much with it, but it's, we've received several complaints, including from council about the condition of the property. We've been working with the property owner for quite some time now to get the building down. And, and it's not moving along as fast as we hoped. So what I'd like to do is get a demolition order issued. And in hopes that the building will come down prior to the thirty days expiring before we step in and do it ourselves. There is a date picked by the owner for the, it was the sixteenth of July and now it's moved to the twenty third of July. So hopefully on the twenty third of July, or the twenty fourth of July, there won't be a building there anymore.
So by this process, if this motion is passed and there is a building there
Yes.
thirty days from now.
Yes.
Then we just go in and take it down.
We'll bring contractors in and remove the building.
Okay. Council Graves.
Is there a difference between having town take it down and, and a landowner who's under some duress taking it down in terms of?
We still make sure that the property's safe and cleaned. So he may be able to do it cheaper with contractors that they don't require to have all the insurance liability issues, things like that, that, that the town would. But it, it would be more of a process for the town to, to take it down. But it, it'd be in his benefit for him to remove his own building than for us to enter his property and do it for him.
So if he does take it down himself, is there town, is there a town employee there kind of supervising the job?
No, at the end of the job, we go and make sure that it's, the site's been clean property.
And then in terms of the environment, specifically the La Haye River, there are certain rules I would imagine that have to be adhered to.
Well, that's right. It's not something that, that we would necessarily inspect. There's other, you know, governing rules, provincial rules that, that would come into play as well. If there's a complaint, then we would, we would deal with that as well, whether it's through environment or any other issues. So, but.
And then I guess one more, just taking down that building requires probably closing off a portion of King Street and?
Most likely. It's, it's supposed to happen early on a Sunday morning, but there is a section that we may have to close for a period of time. So it shouldn't take much to get rid of the building.
No, I'm sure.
Just to piggyback on Council Graves' question, two questions I have. One is, let's say the building's taken down, but the site is not to our satisfaction and the town has, does the town go in, make sure it is, and then we charge the owner for that?
Right, we will lean the property.
And second, to Council Graves' environmental question, do we notify D O E that there is a demolition taking place along the banks of the La Haye?
No, typically as long as there, any work's been done above high watermark, they don't even want to know about it.
So I guess just a question for Jamie Ellen. When, with the building down, what happens with the property moving forward?
Um, well, that will be up to the property owners, but if he would still own it, if there's pretty impressive exaltion on that property, so hopefully somebody would stop there if they want to use it or something. You know, we could decide to enforce that.
But you can't put a building on it?
I mean?
You can put a building, another building, yeah. But a commercial building?
Yeah, so the ground floor would have to be commercial, like retail, whether it be residential or bigger.
Council Thorburn.
With regard to that, Jamie, would there be any special precautions taken because that would be in the flood zone?
Can you use your microphone, please, Jamie Ellen? Thank you.
So the overlay zone that we were talking about with the La Haye auto file, the La Haye for Development Agreement overlay zone, so it would have to proceed by development agreement, I believe. So there would be some, some additional checks. agreement, I believe, so there would be some additional checks, additional criteria that the development would have to meet. And then there's, there are criteria under the, just the general development agreement criteria as well that would speak to contamination and that sort of thing as well, so we would have lots of opportunity to make sure that it's a good development.
Okay, great. Any further questions? Someone, we haven't made a motion yet, someone want to make a motion?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse a recommendation of staff and issue an order to demolish for the building located at six eighty-six King Street in Bridgewater, Nova Scotia, property ID number six zero zero four two two six four, to ensure the demolition of the building and site cleanup is outlined in document seventeen dash one zero three.
Have a second or please? Council McDonald, any further discussion? Council McGinnis has a smile on his face like.
No, I just hate, I hate to see a ghost. It was my favorite bookstore.
Ready for the question? Question, question being called, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Tender seventeen dash zero five E asphalt supply and asphalt supply and place. In your document are the locations, the, my understanding is the main locations and we don't list all the little spots that we do, so that if it's not listed here, it doesn't necessarily mean that here and there isn't getting done, that's what I understand.
Correct.
From Mr. Feener. Someone want to make a motion?
Yes, your worship, I move the town council of the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the engineering department and award tender seventeen dash zero five E asphalt supply and asphalt supply in place to lowest tenders as presented in document seventeen dash one zero four and as follows, one-half asphalt hand patch to La Havre paving, one-half inch asphalt spreader patch, one-half asphalt overlay and one-half inch asphalt supply to Dexter Construction and the coal planning, plating of asphalt be awarded to lowest tender Dexter Construction.
Have a second or please? Council Fager. Are there any, any questions? Any questions of our engineering staff? I know Mr. Hopkins is eager to answer all your paving questions. So my understanding is this will start in August, I think the information I have is late August, like the twentieth of August, which begs the question, should we be having the paving discussion earlier in the year and getting ready to go out to tender earlier than August? So that's probably just a rhetorical question for council that we should probably discuss because I feel like if we're paving in August, we've missed a couple of good months and we're paving in the middle of when we still have summer tourists here, that they're all congregating in Bridgewater, but with all the things we're building, we're going to be busier, should we not be doing this in June? But that's kind of a.
Good point.
Rhetorical question for maybe in the fall, we can start having that discussion. All right, there's motion on the floor, any further discussion? No, hearing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Tenders seventeen dash zero six E gravel supply. Anyone wish to make that? Motion, council, all of them.
I've moved the town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the engineering department and award tender seventeen dash zero six E gravel supply to the lowest tenders as outlined in document seventeen dash zero six E Gerald W. Vino Excavation Company Limited, Class A, Class C, one inch minus, and Gabion Rock, Bernard L. Mailman Shale and Class E So Shore Ready Mix Limited, top soil delivered, and Monds Construction Incorporated, top soil supply.
Have a second or please? Mayor Tanner, any discussion?
Yes, question. How do we ensure we get top quality top soil when we have these, it's tenders and not top soil that's.
That's a good question.
Full of rock or asphalt or things like that.
If there's a question of the quality of the top soil, then we have it tested, there's a specification for what top soil is supposed to meet, there's sieve analysis, there's different tests that you can do to make sure that the percentages of clay, sand, things like that meet our requirement, so.
So hypothetically, what do we, what do we do if we find that a supplier has perhaps provided top soil that doesn't meet our spec and we might be awarding business to them again?
That's if we switch contractors, if we found that their product wasn't any good, then we'd switch contractors. So you're saying if, when we tender the next year, if it happens again, is that what you're saying, or?
I guess.
If there's a bad product, then we stop using the product and go to the next tender.
So what, do I, just, because we do have an issue where we had top soil placed on a field that I would say did not meet the qualities, filled with rocks and didn't have giant chunks of, looked like road in it, how do we deal with that after the fact? It's one thing to switch companies, which is fine, but how do we remediate that? We shouldn't be remediating that at our cost, I would think.
No.
So how do we build that in to make sure before they dump it on our property it's good quality?
And the situation, I think you're talking about down in Kinsman Field, I don't know all the ins and outs of where that came from, and the other thing is when you stockpile materials on our property and it's getting low and we're digging into the pile, we may be getting more than what they sent us, we could be taking some of our, you know, gravel in our parking lot with it. So we have to be careful of what it was and where it came from, and I don't know the whole situation of, in that particular case, so, but if we were seeing that as something that got dumped in our yard for our top soil supply, then we wouldn't be accepting it, so. It would, it would be caught at that point, it wouldn't be caught down, placed.
And to answer your question. Got it, so. Any further questions? Ready for the vote?
Yeah.
All those in favor? Motion is carried. RFP two thousand seventeen dash zero four, design of building automation and demand control ventilation systems. Someone want to make a motion?
I would like to talk upon this, so I'll make the motion. I move the town council of the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the engineering department and award RFP two thousand seventeen dash zero five, design of building automation and demand control ventilation systems to East Point Engineering Limited for a total sum of eleven thousand two hundred and seventy dollars, including HST, ten thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and three cents net HST is per document seventeen dash one zero eight.
Have a second or please? Deputy Mayor Tanner.
Been around this table for a long time and I think the last work done was in two thousand and ten. The ventilation and the heating in this building has been anything but satisfactory. I don't know about the staff, I know in some places there's been, you know, some days when it's really, really warm and other days you might have to put your overcoat on, and I'm hoping that this will cure the problem because it is a big problem and without being, and I, I don't know, I'd just like to know if that's the same company that did the work in two thousand and ten, or do we know that? And I don't want to slander that company, they're probably a very good company, and this is a very difficult building to give ventilation in, I understand that.
Right, so this really has nothing to do with the current problems in this building, if that's what you're talking about?
This is something totally different.
This has to do with automation and efficiencies of other systems and our public works garage, which has nothing right now. The issues with our building is a, is a different problem than what this is dealing with.
That doesn't help me at all.
No.
No, I.
This fire hall, police department, so, so we have some, through our efficiency programs, we can, we can, you know, Kirk in his office, he can control some things that are going on in the building and we can track things better. We've changed, technology has changed over the years, we've had equipment changes and now our systems that we do have don't talk to each other very well, so, so we're upgrading that, but some of our buildings don't have any at all, so, so that's what this tender's about. The problem with our building is from a previous tender for heating systems and we're still working on it, it's, I think it's with our lawyers right now, actually, so, but that's a, that's a different problem.
Mayor Tanner, I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this, but we're responsible with doing this design work for the police services facility which we lease, it's not part of that lease agreement, not at all?
Nope.
Okay, and part two of the question is, this is just the design of the system, so.
Right, this isn't doing the work, it's designing the work.
So ballpark, what's coming next? Do you know?
Cost-wise?
Yeah.
I, I don't even want to say, I don't, I'm not sure what the number is.
Because you're scared.
Yeah. It's more than this, though.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Council Thurman?
Yeah, a little bit concerned, low tender is only about ninety-eight hundred dollars and that is really low, look at the rest of them, the second one, lowest one is sixteen thousand, it goes up to forty-six thousand, I guess, you read the numbers, somebody's either padding it or, but you've recommended the very lowest one there.
The difference.
And I know it was close, so.
First and second was one point in our values.
One point difference.
Yeah, and, and the other contractor, the mechanical engineer, he was one that we've used before and it was, you know, it was too bad, but, you know, the points were the points and, but it was one, one point determining.
That much of a difference in price, it should be worth a lot more than one point.
Any further discussion?
Question.
Question being called, all those in favor? Motion is carried. You look like you're pondering, no?
I am in my own mind, yeah.
Okay, well, we're going to move on. Second and final reading, amended chapter one eighty-nine bylaw respecting cost recovery, Glenn Allen extension. Director of Finance Kaiser.
So council will recall that the Glenn Allen bylaw relates back to two thousand and six and it was set up to recover the costs of putting the infrastructure over in Glenn Allen, the road, the sewer, storm sewer and so on. It's, it's now eleven years later, I guess, and, and there's concern that the, the property value, that this is pushing the cost of property up over, you know, what, that it's affecting the marketability of the properties. So all this change does is to stop the interest from accruing, so that there's an interest at, at prime that accrues monthly on these charges, so this is to stop the interest from continuing to accrue and thus driving the, the cost of the properties up to those who own it.
And this is second and final reading of that. Does someone want to make a motion? Council Fager.
Yes, your worship, that town council for the town of Bridgewater approved the second reading of the proposed amended chapter one eighty-nine bylaw respecting cost recovery, Glenn Allen extension as presented in document seventeen dash zero eight two A, adopt as bylaw and authorize staff to publish all public notices pursuant to section one sixty-eight of the Municipal Government Act.
Have a second or please? Council McDonald, any further discussion? Any questions of the director of finance? No, hearing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Next item is Bridgewater Elementary School Playground, document seventeen dash zero zero two F, should have that document in your package. We have requested at a previous meeting a little bit more information, which we do have. There is no, there is no motion in your package. I do see we do have two members of the committee here. If council has questions, would you be able to, would you be willing to answer their questions? Yes? Why don't we start with that? Does council have any questions that they need for clarification? To start the discussion? I mean, I'll start by saying I don't think anyone around the table doesn't support the project. It's not a matter of, do we feel that Bridgewater Elementary School should have a playground? For me, part of the concern is, I still can't wrap my head around how we give two million dollars towards education and yet in return, we don't get a playground from the school board, and I understand it's not their mandate, it's not what they do. I just, for me, I have a bit of a struggle with what we pay and what we, what we get. And while I appreciate their commitment to sixteen thousand dollars worth of in-kind work, when I look at the sixteen thousand dollars, and I believe, Gail, you said at the last meeting, we have about fifteen thousand dollars worth of community fundraising that's come in, and I look at the ask of council, we are now a fifty percent contributor and where we were looking to be last out, we're now first in. I'm concerned with the speed at which this is going, I feel like this came to us in February and we're now having to build this, and I understand that part of that is because the other component is, if it's not out yet, it's coming out soon, the last piece of the When I'm out in the community, I, I'm surprised at the number of people who are not aware that there's going to be no playground at the school. It shocked me, and I don't know why they don't know, because it's, it's been out there, but it's, it just doesn't seem to be an awareness. So it's a struggle for me, because again, I can't not have a playground, but we're missing a provincial component, we're missing more community contribution. And I struggle with the town being, if we are looking at using the money available, which is the thirty-six from the town, the fifteen, sixteen, we're looking at the town being a fifty percent contributor, which I have concerns with, so I'll be, I'll be honest, I don't yet know where I'm at with this, because I, we set the money aside in the budget, the money is there, so it doesn't have an impact, we have passed our budget with this in there, I just feel like the community needs to step in here. Council Fager.
Yeah, and as Mayor Mitchell said, I feel that we're on this fast-track pace to speed up and I, I get the urgency of the need for the playground and the time window when you look at the students aren't there in the summer months to, to make this happen, but at the same time, we have to ensure that the plan, that every, all the ducks are in a row, everything has been, been looked at as far as, and I know from previous council meetings that the memorandum of understanding between the board, the school board and council was, was definitely a concern, and I feel that that's sort of being pushed off in this And further to Mayor Mitchell's comments with regards to a large number of the community not being aware of the situation the playground is in, I, I find that I am explaining to business owners that have supported the playground ten years ago for the fundraising are unaware of what happened to the playground, so I, I feel that there is a piece, whether it be taken to the media, to let them know of the situation, because a lot of the business community I'm hearing does not know that news story, so, and I think that's a critical piece, because I think, you know, the community wants to see that we have a playground, so it's an important piece.
Anyone else? Does anyone have any questions?
Well, just, I also think that there should.
I want to talk.
Okay, Council Graves.
Sorry, I also think that there should be more, more investment by the community. We just funded a skateboard park where ninety percent of the money came from government sources and to me, that's just a little bit too high for something that people really, really want, so I think the private sector is kind of, has to step in and there's certainly examples of that happening, O'Regan does an example, helping nature heal, or some other examples of the corporate sector stepping in and making things happen, so. Sorry.
Council McGinnis.
I can't help myself because I have to say something with respect to the profits and the money we already give to education, we give two-point-one million a year. What's worse than that, though, that people are not understanding, is that the amount that the province gives to our school board has been decreasing, yet our contribution has been increasing by the rate of inflation every year, so we'll soon be funding the whole operation up there. That's not my speech, whose ultimate responsibility is it to build that playground or replace it? Who, who's respons, if it's not the school boards, whose is it? Is it the towns, is it the province? Does anyone? Does anyone know that?
I would suggest that it's the community's responsibility to build the playground. It's the school board's responsibility to maintain it, but it's not, my understanding is it's not the board's responsibility to build it? So that only leaves the community, and whether it's us as a community or the general population.
Well, I guess my comment to that would be, and I love debates, we represent the community. So I would suspect we should be playing a leadership role in this. Maybe not funding it all, but maybe playing a bigger role than we're already playing. Because, you know, I foolishly thought that the school board funded all of that, and they don't for some reason or other. And they're helping out a little bit, and I'm very appreciative of that. But, you know, there's got to be a playground. Plain and simple. I mean, that's an option, from my point of view. And so, you know, we funded the skate park more than I thought we should have last week, as most of you know. I view this as more important, from my point of view. So I'll be supporting.
Mr. Mayor Tanner? I do agree with Counselor McGinnis in the sense that the kids need a playground. You know, I think it, for me, standing there today, listening to that announcement, standing on hot asphalt, and I think I lost a few pounds just listening for a little while, which is not a bad thing either. So I think I'm in Counselor McGinnis's court. We're going to probably end up giving this money at some point anyway, and I agree with Counselor Graves that the business community should be stepping up, but it always seems like it's the same business community stepping up over and over again. And, yeah, I think, you know, there's a lot of after-school programs that use this space. I think Jamie Ellen would tell us that this is probably technically part of an open space concept for the rest of the town, or a play space for the rest of the town, so for that reason, I'll support it. Counselor Thorburn?
I agree with the deputy mayor in my buddy over here. We can't hold the children hostage. I mean, we have a chance to put something in place before school starts, and we're not talking a lot of money, and we're not talking the end of the project. This is the start of the project, and I would fully support the small portion we're going to give to get that started sooner rather than later.
Counselor Graves?
This is still a six hundred thousand dollar project, right?
Oh, yeah.
This is just one small component of the six hundred thousand dollar component of the project. So I don't know if this component, the obstacle course, is going to be dismantled in order to accommodate some of the other things that are happening in the playground. I don't know the...
Gail, would you be able to, do you mind coming down? So this is probably a good opportunity to answer that question. That's a valid question. So if you went ahead with whatever you are able to afford to go ahead with, does any of that have to be undone when more money comes online?
Absolutely not. Now, when we put in the obstacle course, we've grouped it into three small groups that we can build individually, plus there are smaller individual pieces. As fundraising comes in, it's just going to grow and get bigger as we go along, nothing will come out.
Counselor McDonald?
Has there been any discussion? The playgrounds are broken up, so that area, I believe, is two to four? Grids two to four?
That is two to three right now.
Two to three. So how does the school or the lunchtime supervisors handle the fives and sixes who want to come down and play but can't because it's not their playground, and they have to stay on asphalt?
Yeah, that's a good question, that's something we're being challenged with. We're looking at some options to put up in the four, five, six. We have saved a lot of the, all of the components from the previous structures, so we can easily erect, say, a couple of monkey bars at a low cost to put some other items up in the four, five, six area. So we recognize that could be an issue. So depending on what we decide we're going with this summer, we will address that four, five, six area and do what we can up there to make sure that there's some play value in that area.
Counselor McGinnis?
You may not be able to answer this question, and if anyone here can, please. If the project is started, sometimes the province, and maybe any place else you want to get a grant from, might not buy in after it's started. Is there a chance that the province would totally opt out?
My understanding from the provincial grant, that we were hopeful for getting the large one that we applied for, is that that could be applied for each year of your project. So it was an annual thing that we can keep reapplying for.
Until it's completely finished?
That's correct.
So it could go towards phase two or phase one, two point oh?
Yeah, right.
Okay. Gail, and I don't mean to put you in an awkward position here, so I don't feel like you have to answer, but how do we, as council, help you as the committee perhaps start engaging the other part of that whole campus, the junior high school now? Because the feedback that I got from a senior person at that junior high basically felt that because of all the natural play space in behind the high school, junior high space, that we were sort of getting there already. And I guess, you know, it is one big campus now in essence, or that's the theory. So, you know, how do we engage the committee to get those two schools to talking together about, okay, what is the ultimate best design for this space?
Right. It certainly has been in our committee's discussion to engage the junior high school, and we just were stepping back because of everything that was happening, and it was a lot going on for that school. So once sort of the dust settled with the senior high leaving, then we were prepared to approach them. We have some ideas of how they can help with the playground. For example, we want to install some basketball hoops on their, on that building as part of the design, so we're hoping that they'll be able to pitch in with some of those things that the older kids that would be in that building would enjoy.
Counselor Graves?
So are there less expensive ways or less expensive activities that the kids could use? So for example, putting basketball hoops on the wall, it's, it would be kind of semi-permanent, so to speak? Putting more balls out on the field, putting more things, Parks and Rec, our Parks and Rec department, for example, has some outdoor games that are built for large festivals, that kind of stuff. And spending a little bit of money on that, and then at the same time, building, building the fund, your fundraising, and I'm sure that the committee, the community will certainly take notice of the fact that there is no playground there, and that might create a sense of urgency, so that next spring or next summer, you could start. Do you see where I'm coming from?
Understand, in the design, there's quite a few of those inexpensive, you know, low-hanging fruit. There's a lot of painted games and things in the design. We don't want to veer off of the design, so, you know, the first thing was to get as much built as we could during this construction phase of the summer, but we can quickly go to some of those easy, you know, asphalt type of games, the basketball hoops and those things. But those will be quick, easy things that we can do very, very fast, as a last, a last-minute effort to get some things out there.
But using it beforehand might keep the kids, it would keep the kids engaged, at the same time showcase that in fact the playground is needed.
Right. There's quite a bit of loose parts right now, as we call it. There's a lot of, you know, the hula hoops and the games and the balls and things. I know over on the primary to one side, they've purchased a lot of those things, trucks and, you know, the smaller items that the younger kids like to play in the gravel. So there's been quite a bit of that happening over the last two years since we've been doing this work. So, but we can continue to grow that loose parts. It gets difficult with the loose parts because it's all these little pieces that get out in the playground, and we have to get them back in, you know, and secure them each evening or in the weekend, so. But we do have some of that, and we would like to grow with that as well. Thank you.
I know it's always hard to task volunteers to do so much, and I know that this is a big project. So is there a plan in place going forward? So part of me says, I have two arguments on the same thing, is one is, we grant the money, goes ahead, the reduced phase one, I guess we'll call it, is built, and people say, great, done, now I don't have to give? And part of me says, no, as soon as they start seeing it, they'll say, okay, now we need more, and they'll give. So is there a plan in place to really start, like, once construction starts, if it starts this summer, to just say to people, like, this isn't done, like, is there a plan for the next six months?
We've had a couple of launch plans that have fallen flat. One was, we were hoping for the grant, that we could launch and announce the big grant. That didn't come through. We were hoping for some large corporate sponsors that haven't come through, something large that we can take to the media and have a large event that would launch us and have a big announcement that would really kick things off and hopefully get that public awareness that, you know, you guys are hearing as well as us people aren't aware and aren't. We've had many public meetings and asking people to come out and learn more. We had, you know, consultation when we were designing the plan, and the uptake just wasn't there, so.
So maybe, maybe if there's a motion that passes tonight for funding, then that'll be your launch party.
Right.
Because I do, I'll go back to, and Counselor Frasier, you had the same experience, I just go back to that, when I'm in the community, people don't realize that in a few weeks, I guess, there's nothing on that site. Because I expected there would be community outrage, because why would the school not have a playground? To your point. So I'm a bit, I'm a bit, like, what, where's everybody? If you refresh your e-Scribe, you'll see there's a motion in your package. Are there any more questions before we let Gail go away?
You're going to make the motion?
Well, I've got the motion right here in front of me.
So if you refresh it, and I'll give you that dollar number if you want.
I like that dollar number.
Thirty-six thousand four hundred and forty-one is the fifty percent ask.
Thirty-six thousand four hundred and forty-one.
Yeah.
I move the town council of town of Bridgewater approve a thirty-six thousand four hundred and forty-one dollar contribution to the Bridgewater Elementary School Playground Project with the funding provided by the Bridgewater Elementary School Playground Operating Reserve.
Secondary, please. Secondary by Counselor Thorburn. Sorry, Counselor Frasier, just a little quick. It's that pickleball hand. Any further discussion?
Question?
Questions being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion's carried. I, we need to stress for the public that, like, we can't be a fifty percent contributor. So, and for those who did not support the motion, I can, I know you support the project. This is not a support versus non-support of the project. It's, part of it's how we got here, part of it's the speed at which we're going, and the need for the community to really step up, because again, we cannot be a fifty percent contributor. This is a six hundred thousand dollar project, we do not have three hundred thousand dollars. And I know we compare it to the skate park. That is more than a decade in the making. So, but we can wait a decade and maybe come up with three hundred thousand dollars, but I'm pretty sure that we don't want to wait a decade. So I'm imploring the public, while we have a television camera here, to step up and contribute. You've got hundreds of kids that are going to have a small portion, but not what they really deserve. I hope the school board and the province will jump in as well. There is nothing else on the agenda? Motion to adjourn. Nobody wants to move? Okay, we're adjourned. Get back to here.